We begin with the land acknowledgement. The West Hollywood Planning Commission acknowledges that the land on which we gather and that is currently known as the city of West Hollywood is the occupied, unceded, seized territory of the Gabrielino Tonga and Gabrielino Kish peoples. The time is 6:30 PM, and I would like to call this regularly scheduled Planning Commission meeting to order. And Commissioner Jones, could you please lead us in the pledge this evening?
Congratulations. The United States of America, to their beloved, religious saints, organization, under God, and his love, liberty, and justice as they are.
Thank you. That brings us to item three this evening. And I'm pleased to announce that we have the company of Councilmember Erickson. We will be administering the oath of office to our newly appointed planning commissioner, Jesse Harris.
Can't wait.
All right. Ready?
I'm ready.
Raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Jesse C. Harris.
I, Jesse C. Harris.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That while serving in the office.
That while serving in the office.
As a member of the Planning Commission.
As a member of Planning Commission.
Of the city of West Hollywood.
Of the city of West Hollywood.
That I will support and defend.
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of California.
And the Constitution of the state of California.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of California.
And the Constitution of the state of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion.
Without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully.
And that I will well and faithfully.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Upon which I'm about to enter.
Upon which I am about to enter.
Congratulations, Commissioner.
While Jesse is taking their seat, I just wanted to say it's so great to see most of you up here, and the work that you are doing is so tantamount. I want to say hello to my direct appointee, Rogério, as well as all of you. Thank you for the work that you do. Jesse, your work is tantamount to urban planning, but specifically to making sure our streets are safe with your work with the We Hope Bike Coalition, but making sure our streets are livable, walkable, bikeable, and even, yes, that makes sure cars get to and from safely. I know that information is hard to gather and understand for some, but I know that your work on this commission will be tantamount into educating the public, to making sure that when we think about safety for all, we mean everyone that walks on our streets. And I thank you for the work that you're about to undertake. Congratulations. Have a great meeting, and I'll see you all soon.
Thank you, Councilmember.
Thank you, Councilmember Erickson, and congratulations, Commissioner Harris. Okay, item four is roll call. Secretary Gillig, may we please have roll call?
Thank you, and good evening, Commissioners. Commissioner Solomon.
Here.
Commissioner Jones.
Here.
Commissioner Hoop and Garner.
Present.
Commissioner Harris.
Here.
Commissioner Carvalero.
Here.
Vice Chair Gregoire.
Here.
Chair Lombardi.
Present.
And we have a quorum.
Thank you. Item five is approval of the agenda. We'll move to approve tonight's agenda.
I'll move.
Okay, I was going to ask if there were any changes. It sounds like no. I heard a lot of people at once, but I heard Commissioner Jones. And who would like to second?
I will second.
Okay. Commissioner Hoop and Garner, thank you.
And the motion passes approving the agenda for Thursday, October 7th, 2025 unanimously as presented.
Okay, thank you. That brings us to Special Order Business, item 6A, which is election of the chair. A planning commission will nominate and elect a chair of the planning commission for a term through June 30th, 2026.
I'd like to make a motion to nominate Vice Chair David Gregoire as chair.
I'll second.
Okay, great. Any other nominations?
I don't see any on the floor. We can take a roll call now. And I will do a voice call vote. Commissioner Calvallaro.
Yes.
Commissioner Harris.
Yes.
Commissioner Hoop and Garner.
I.
Commissioner Jones.
Yes.
Commissioner Solomon.
Yes.
I'm sorry, Vice Chair Gregoire.
Yes.
And Chair Lombardi.
Yes.
Great, thank you.
Congratulations. Vice Chair Gregoire will start his term at our next meeting, August 21st, and that will commence through June 30th of 2026.
Congratulations, Vice Chair Gregoire. Okay, item 6B, election of the vice chair. Do we have any nominations?
I'll make a motion again to nominate Commissioner Stacy Jones as vice chair.
I will second.
Are there any other nominations?
I don't see any other.
I'm going to nominate Commissioner Hoop and Garner.
I'll second.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other nominations on the floor? Seeing none. So this, we're going to do this a little differently. When we call your name, please provide us your choice. Commissioner Calvallaro.
Commissioner Hoop and Garner.
Hoop and Garner? Thank you.
Well, no, she's off, she's on. Okay, so at this point, we're just voting, roll call vote for each nominee. Is that correct?
We are, no, you're selecting, you're voting for the member that you would like to select as your next vice chair.
I see, okay. Okay. And in that case, Commissioner Jones.
Thank you. Commissioner Hoop and Garner.
I will vote for myself.
Thank you. Commissioner Jones.
I'm also going to vote for myself. This is so awkward.
Commissioner Solomon.
Commissioner Jones.
Thank you. Vice Chair Gregoire.
Commissioner Jones.
And Chair Lombardi.
Commissioner Hoop and Garner.
Thank you. So we've elected Vice Chair Jones. Congratulations. As the vice chair of the planning commission for a term commencing August 21st through June 30th, 2026.
Congratulations, Commissioner Jones. Okay, item seven is approval of the minutes. We have draft verbatim minutes dated June 5th, 2025. Would anyone like to, are there any edits, first of all?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
Okay. Motion to approve by Commissioner Carvalero.
I'll second.
Thank you, and the motion passes noting six eyes, with Commissioner Harris abstaining from this vote, approving the minutes of the draft verbatim minutes of June 5th, 2025 as presented.
Okay, thank you. Item eight, public comment. Secretary Gillig, do we?
Chair, we do have one public comment here in chambers. Our first speaker will be David Eichman. You'll have three minutes.
Good evening, David Eichman, resident of Los Angeles and a business owner in the city of West Hollywood, also the newly elected chair of the city's Transportation and Mobility Commission. One of the reasons, I know most of you, so obviously I know there are a lot of issues where our commissions overlap, especially in transportation. Please feel free to reach out to me if you have any questions, comments, issues that you see. You're the eyes and ears of the city as commissioners, as you know, so please reach out if you see any transportation-related issues or improvements to the transportation system. But the main reason I'm here is to congratulate Commissioner Harris on their promotion to the planning commission. We served several years together on transportation, so I know you have an advocate, a true advocate here. Also want to congratulate, obviously, Commissioner Gregoire on his election and Commissioner Jones on her election. Thank you.
Or that is our last public speaker.
Okay, and no one in Zoom?
No.
Okay, thank you. Item nine is the director's report. I believe Jennifer Alcar, acting director of community development, will be providing the report today.
Good evening, thank you. Can you hear me okay? All right. Good evening, it's been a while since we've gathered here. I just wanted to, as you mentioned, I'm Jennifer Alcar, I'm the acting director of community development. I'm here in place of Nick Marisic, he is still on leave, but he should be back at the beginning of September. I first wanted to thank Chair Lombardi for your service as chair over the last year. We've had a lot of big projects come through, and you've handled it with a lot of grace and a lot of big policy items as well. So thank you so much for the last year and for running efficient and productive meetings. I want to recognize, he's not here, but I wanted to recognize outgoing Commissioner Eric Mattos. We didn't get to say goodbye at his last meeting, we thought we'd have one more, but it got canceled, so thank you to Eric. He joined the commission in June 2023, he was here with us for two years. He lent insight to a number of really good projects, and we will miss him around here. And with that, I wanted to also welcome Commissioner Harris. We're excited to work with you and in the coming months and years. And now, a quick recap, as is normally what I talk about, on the last, on the things that the city council has done recently. So on June 23rd, the council took the commission's recommendation and unanimously adopted a zone text amendment related to EV charging sites. And then on August 4th, the council took action on three long-range planning items. The first was that council adopted changes to city's regulatory, I'm sorry, regulations on accessory business uses and incidental business use, accessory business activities and incidental business uses, which the commission also recommended approval of. The council adopted amendments to the zoning ordinance to introduce standards for shared housing developments. And the council took action on a climate implementation measure aimed at helping to achieve decarbonization by making existing buildings more efficient over time, and all three of those were unanimous votes by the council. That concludes my comments for tonight, and as ever, I'm here for questions.
Thank you, Jennifer, for the kind words. Any questions? My colleagues? No? Thank you. Item 10A, consent calendar, we have no items this evening. Item 11A, public hearing, section one, project subject to the Housing Accountability Act, we also have no items, which brings us to our first public hearing of the evening. Item 12A, these are public hearings under section two, other items that require public hearing under law. Item 12A is 1221 North Detroit Street. This is a subdivision of a five-unit residential building into a common interest development. Thank you, and I believe we have a staff report.
Yes. Thank you, Chair. Chair Lombardi, good evening. Antonio Castillo, senior planner with the current and historic preservation planning division. Also welcome Commissioner Harris. The item before you this evening is a request for approval of a tentative tract map for the conversion of a rental housing into a common interest development or condominiums. The property is located on the west side of Detroit Street between Fountain Avenue to the north and Lexington Avenue to the south. The relatively flat site is approximately 6,700 square feet in size. The planning commission, or the planning entitlements for the construction of the three-story, five-unit residential building was approved by the planning commission in June of 2017, and the construction of the building was completed in 2023. The building received a certificate of occupancy in October of 2023 and has since been occupied with tenants. At the time of the hearing in 2017, the commission also approved a tentative tract map for this building. However, the final map was not completed and filed with the county by the applicant, and so it expired in June of 2019. The developer is pursuing a new application to complete that subdivision. The building was designed and approved to comply with the, with the density requirements for dwellings within the R3C zoning district and all the other applicable property development standards under the city's zoning ordinance. The property continues to conform with all the applicable development standards, and it is staff's assessment that the subdivision will not be detrimental to the public welfare and will not impede implementation of the general plan, nor the purpose and intent of the provisions of the zoning ordinance. Therefore, staff recommends approval of the subdivision permit as conditioned in the draft resolution with one addition. Staff would like to introduce and recommend an additional condition of approval in the rent stabilization and housing or section six of the resolution, and that being condition 6.3, it would be the last one in the resolution. That resolution is to read, "Within 120 days after the final map has been filed with the county and assessor numbers have been created for each residential unit, the developer shall register all units with the city's rent stabilization division." This condition has been shared with the applicant, and they agree to this additional condition that staff's recommending. And with that, this concludes my brief presentation, and I'm available for any questions. And I don't see the applicant team here.
Okay, noted. Well, any disclosures? No disclosures, okay.
Staff, your applicant is on Zoom if you have questions.
Great, okay, thank you. Are there any questions of staff at this time regarding this item?
Just one.
Commissioner Hoop and Garner?
Tony, when did the ordinance change to prohibit on-street parking for new developments? What year was that?
To prohibit on-street parking for new developments?
Does, does this 2017 date, where does that fall, is my question?
That is, that is a condition that's added, it's not a provision in the municipal code.
So, but when did we start doing that?
After 2017.
Okay.
I don't have the exact date, Commissioner.
I'm just wondering if it's one of those that would be subject in the CCNRs to prohibit on-street parking permits, and so therefore we should make that clear. So if it's not, then that's fine, but if it is, I didn't see it in these resolutions, so that was my reason for my question.
I see. I mean, it can be included as a, as a condition consistent with some of the more recent resolutions. We can certainly include that.
Well, that would be kind of going back and changing the game after the original approval was done, but I'm just, I just want to make sure we're consistent, that's all.
Understood.
So we don't know.
Maybe we can give staff a minute in case they want to take a further look? Okay, thank you. Do you have other questions, Commissioner Hoop and Garner?
No.
No? Anyone else? Questions? No?
I did have a question, I know that.
I'm sorry, who's speaking?
Oh, Commissioner Harris for the record.
Sorry, I could not see you. Thank you. I thought it was coming from Zoom.
No, my bad. Commissioner Harris for the record. I actually had a question on this one, because I know it's already constructed and it, it has been occupied. Do we know how many of the units are currently occupied?
It, it is my understanding from a conversation with the applicant that all five are occupied. However, perhaps the applicant can confirm that, that they don't have a presentation, it's my understanding, but if, if the commission would like, perhaps they can clarify that. But it's my understanding that all five units are occupied.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Harris.
Commissioner Harris for the record. I'll give the applicant a moment in case they want to chime in. I understand they, they might be online on Zoom, is that right?
Yes, and if you do not have other questions for staff, then we can ask the applicant first if they have any, if they'd like to present. I understand they may not have a presentation today, and if that's the case, then we could simply go into questions for the applicant. So I'll ask the applicant at this time if you could state your name and city of residence, and let us know if you plan to present on this matter.
Yes, good evening, Commissioners. My name is Michael Bojino. I am from Sherman Oaks, and I do not have a presentation for this application. I think Antonio did a great job summarizing the application. If you have any questions other than the number of units rented, which there are five units that have been rented.
Okay, Commissioner Harris, for the record. So my, my questions are really, really, and these are questions for staff. They're really about how this conversion works. I know that the, the tenants, the current, the existing tenants have the right of first refusal to the unit, right? They have to get upon the terms that are offered to the general public, or better terms. And I'm just wondering how exactly that works? If there's an existing tenant and the unit is offered to them, ostensibly it's offered to them at a, at a, the, the price is set per square foot, that's the same price that would be offered to the public. And then if the tenant is not able to, say, afford the unit as a, as a purchase unit, does that mean that they are, they receive the relocation amount that, that's set for that bedroom type?
Give me one, one moment, Commissioner, I need to discuss this. So Commissioner, the, the, the units are not rent stabilized, and, and so if, if the, the tenant is, if the, the owner, the developer is, is going to initiate the eviction process, they, they would need to file with the Housing and Rent Stabilization Division. The formula or the process specifically is not something that I know of, off the top of my head to be able to provide that information at this time.
Okay, thank you.
But would it be based off the terms of their lease?
In terms of the dollar amount?
It would be based off the terms of their lease? In other words, if they had a one-year lease and they, and the landowner tried to terminate the lease early, I mean, wouldn't there be provisions within that lease?
There are, well, that, I think that, that would depend on, that would depend on whether the, the unit is going to be, if the unit's going to go through the eviction the unit is going to be, if the unit's going to go through the eviction process. That's currently not their intent at the moment. If they so choose in the future, they will need to, the tenants will be provided the required notice, that's in our municipal code, but also in state law, and then work with the Housing and Rent Stabilization Division. As Commissioner Harris mentioned, the tenants will have the right of first refusal, and in terms of what the sale purchase of the unit itself is, it's not something that I have information on. That wouldn't be based on the existing lease that they have now, but the, would be subject to the rent stabilization process for evictions, relocation, and anything in that ordinance
Do we have any other questions? Mr. Chair, regard for?
If there's no other questions, I'll move approval of staff's recommendation.
Well, I just want to make sure before we go too fast, do we have any public comments on this item?
Chair, we have no public comments.
Okay, Commissioner Solomon?
Yeah, I just have one brief comment that I wanted to make as it relates to this and the next item, that as we are through long-range planning and then through planning, pursuing the council item on streamlining development permits, to me it makes sense as we think about how we apply the Subdivision Maps Act to the City of West Hollywood, that those two things are aligned. It doesn't make sense if we have new for-sale housing that follows a new process for its permit, yet because of the way in which we decide to apply the Subdivision Maps Act, we're still up in front of discretionary bodies. So I don't know if that needs to be a new directive from council, or if that's something that we can discuss in long-range planning as we go through the streamlining ordinance, but just something that I wanted us to be aware of.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other comments? Otherwise, we have a motion on the floor. So I see some people with their hands up in the room, so I'm wondering if we do have public comments, and if so, there's a public comment slip that's normally filled out. Secretary Gillig over here.
If you do want to speak, there's a QR code to scan to fill in your name. What you can do though is we'll still call you up now to save time, and you can fill it out after the fact.
Okay.
So just approach the podium, state your name. You have three minutes.
And Chair, I would just note, I would probably take a motion just to reopen public comment.
Correct. So we never opened the public comment portion of this hearing. Do we need a formal motion, or can we--
I think consent is fine.
Consent, okay. So agree to open the public comment portion of this hearing? Okay, thank you then. I will, we'll begin the public comment portion of this hearing. All questions and comments of this matter are to be directed to the commission and not to the audience. Please state your name and city of residence, and you will have three minutes.
My name is Kendall Jackson. I live in West Hollywood at 1221 North Detroit Street, so I'm a current tenant. I will keep this very short. I do just want to be on record saying that as a current tenant, I strongly would prefer, you know, that the properties remain rental properties. I think there is a lack of affordable rental properties in places like West Hollywood, desirable neighborhoods in Los Angeles like West Hollywood, and the conversion to condos would, I think, price out a lot of the current tenants. So I do just want to be on record, stay in that.
Thank you.
Thank you. And is there anybody else that would like to speak?
Thank you.
Just state your name, city of residence, and you'll have three minutes.
My name's Alan Forrest, and I'm a resident of 1221 North Detroit Street. I guess my question to you guys is that I know that the owner, who's a business owner, has every right to, you know, sell his units how he see fit. My question is that if it does get to the point where he's going to say, hey, look, hey, 1221 residents, we know that we're going to sell this building here, what are we guaranteed for our next, our next move if we cannot, or we choose not to purchase the units? Because, you know, from what I looked at on Zillow, there was, you know, priced pretty high for that location over there, and, you know, for what we're already paying now for rent is already pretty high. So I'm just trying to kind of figure out, like, if they do decide to evict us, what would be our next steps in terms of from the support from your divisions and stuff like that to make sure that we have adequate and proper housing?
Okay, thank you. We're not able to directly answer your question, but received.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
And thank you. And Chair, I believe that's our last public speaker.
Okay, thank you. Well, then I will close the public comment portion of this hearing.
Can I see if Tony's got my answer?
Yes. So we had a question to staff from Commissioner Hoop and Garner regarding the parking, and we're wondering if staff has any questions to that, and then--
I need just one more moment, Chair. I'll pull that up. I believe that condition was included in, for this project. I'm just confirming that right now.
Thank you.
Could you restate that? So the--
In the original resolution?
In the, in the original resolution for the development permit--
The 2017? I pulled mine, and I couldn't, I couldn't find it, but I might have looked wrong, so that's why I was asking the question. Sorry. Sima Kreshi? No.
Okay, well, I'll take this one. Thank you. Good evening, Commissioners. Sima Kreshi, Planning Manager. So we're looking at the previous resolution for this project, which was approved for the development. It has this Condition 10.8, which says that the project has to basically provide all off-street parking onsite, and this project is designed with onsite parking. Condition 10.8 also says for projects located within an identified permit parking district, no annual residential and guest parking permits will be granted to the occupants, whether lessees, renters, or owners of the project. So it was already conditioned.
It was there, okay. That's what I, that's what I thought. So that's why I was concerned, to make sure that that would be included in the CCNRs for this tract map. So that that's reiterated, so that it's very, it's an important component, that if you're buying a unit, to know that you're not going to be allowed street parking--
Yeah, we can add that.
Other than the 50 minimum, or maximum, actually.
Yeah, since it was already conditioned, we can add that to CCNRs as well.
Okay, thank you. That was my concern.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Jones, did you have a question?
I do. Okay, good, it's on, sorry. I just want to ask a question of staff, just a quick point of clarification. So Antonio, you mentioned that the applicant doesn't have plans or intentions of moving current residents out?
That's correct.
So for posterity, I'm going to say this. So generally speaking, and I don't know if we've had one of these, at least not in my time on commission, whereby we're getting a request for a subdivision, like a tract map, while the unit is, while the property is already occupied. We typically get them before the certificate of occupancy is issued. As a general rule, I think, and again, please correct me if I'm speaking out of turn here, but property owners generally request tract maps and the sub, that's the subdivision is the mechanism, so that it's part of the kind of total entitlement for the property, correct? So that if they ever sold it, that it would be, the tract map would carry into that sale, correct?
It can be submitted concurrently with the development permit for when, for the planning entitlements, but can also be done separately, submitted separately.
Right, but it, again, I'm saying this out loud for a reason. Approval of this does not mean that these, these units could not be rented even in perpetuity, correct?
That is correct.
Okay, great, thank you very much.
Okay, was there any--
Commissioner Jones, we did approve Cynthia.
2021?
Yeah.
Yeah. It's been years since we've seen one like this. That leads me to ask if there were any questions to the applicant in light of any of this? And I know that we're jumping around in order more than usual here. Because there were some public comments, I would like to give the applicant the opportunity if they want to say anything, I guess as a rebuttal, now would be the time before we close the public comment portion of the hearing. So applicant and your team, did you have anything you wanted to add at this time? I will take that as a no. Okay. Then I will close the public comment portion of this hearing, and now we can move back into deliberation. Any comments at this time? Commissioner Hoop and Garner?
Yes, first I'd like to thank staff for adding 6.3. I think that's a really important addition, and especially in light of the fact that these are occupied units. And perhaps for future staff reports, where there are tenants with questions, the staff report could better answer those types of questions as to what their rights might be in this situation, and know that they could go to housing, et cetera. That it's not just you have a right to buy and that's that, but what are your further rights? And that's where back to the, your lease, et cetera, et cetera, matters. So I think anything we can do in the staff reports to do, you know, without a big, you know, verbose discussion, just a nominal conversation about what the tenant's rights would be and where they would go. Because I think we also have to address this in maybe the next item as relates to affordable housing, you know? So the similar questions are going to come up. So I'd like to thank you for adding 6.3. And I don't know legal if we need to make an amendment to the resolution to address the parking. Just cross-reference 10.8 in the original resolution or copy it?
Commissioner Hoop and Garner, one thought I have for the commission's consideration is we have that new condition that Mr. Castillo read into the record, 6.3 that you mentioned. We could add a sentence to that, to that new condition that says the CCNRs will reiterate the requirements associated with off-street parking under Condition 10.8 within the 2017 resolution for the property site.
That would be excellent, thank you.
Okay, is that the preference, is one condition to address both versus two separate?
I think it's sort of at the discretion of the commission.
To me, they're two separate items, so they should be two separate--
That's how I feel.
--numbers. I mean, to conflate them would be confusing.
Because the, the parking item is a more consistent one that we've added, so it maybe could stand and mimic the other ones in terms of its wording.
So, yeah, and we're happy to read those back into the record if that is ultimately part of the commission's motion.
Any other discussion from my colleagues? Commissioner Harris?
Yes, Commissioner Harris for the record. Okay, so I did want to revisit this RSO thing for the benefit of myself, my fellow commissioners, and then members of the public who showed up tonight. So you mentioned earlier that they, this condition, this new condition, would require the property owner to register the units with the RSO unit, right? With the RSO Department of the City of West Hollywood, is that correct?
That is correct, yes.
And you also mentioned that the units are not currently under, covered under the rent stabilization ordinance, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, and that's because they are new units, right? They were built after the RSO deadline?
Correct.
Okay. And so does that mean that because they are not currently RSO units, that the existing tenants are not eligible for any city-determined relocation fees? Are those relocation fees only for existing RSO units?
I'm going to have to confer with, with my team here. I don't believe that's the case. The rent stabilization ordinance has provisions for evictions and relocation separate and apart from rents, from a unit being rent stabilized.
I believe that's true.
We have a commissioner here who's got rent stabilization experience.
Okay, Commissioner Solomon?
So just to confirm, for the benefit of the public that was here tonight, even though these are non-RSO units, they're market rate units, if they're being taken off of the rental market, then the relocation fees that are published by the City of West Hollywood Rent Stabilization Division, they're published every year, they're updated every year, those fees would apply to any tenant who is ultimately evicted because the property goes up for sale, in addition to their right of first negotiation on the sale.
That is my understanding, but I'd like to confirm that it's outside of our zoning ordinance, so I need to check Chapter 17 to answer that. But again, the, the, there is a process for the evictions and relocation. As far as a dollar amount, that fee schedule, I don't know off the top of my head.
I mean, I have one in front of me, I just don't know if it's applicable.
If you allow me one moment, I can take a look at that.
Are there any other deliberation or conversations while staff looks that up? No?
I have none.
I would note for the record, I know, I know staff is looking into it, but the provisions associated, just for, for the benefit of the public, as Mr. Castillo mentioned, Chapter 17.52 includes reference to the applicable process and procedure that the housing team, which generally falls under the city manager's department, would employ for purposes of the specific benefits, in addition to what's under state law, Government Code 66427.1. So I know that's not a specific answer about the relocation benefits, but there are provisions within the resolution, conditions of approval that speak to ensuring compliance with those statutory obligations and also the local codified requirements.
Okay, thank you. I was about to say, taking into account deficiency, I know that the matter that we are looking at right now relates to the subdivision of the property itself, so I guess I would ask my colleagues if we're comfortable with proceeding, or if you would like staff to follow up later in this meeting, since this falls a little bit out of the exact purview of what we're deciding on right now. Otherwise, we can, we can wait. We've had longer meetings, so. I'm getting the sense that we're ready to proceed. I know there was a motion on the floor by the vice chair previously. We've talked about the addition of two conditions.
Well, I think that my, my comment would be that as all of the rent code is, is under Title 17 and is not under our purview at all, I think it's not something we should really be discussing. We understand, you know, the speaker's concerns, and we hope the city will help address them, but it's not in our purview to do anything about. So I, I think we should just go ahead and move forward with what we are supposed to do this evening, and I think I've already made my comments about in the future incorporating, you know, some nominal comments in the staff report, so that people would have these questions answered before they came would be, would be helpful.
Okay. Does anyone feel comfortable making a motion?
Chair, we have one, Vice Chair Gregoire and Commissioner Hoop and Garner.
Okay, so, I'm sorry, I'm not looking at the screen.
It was there for a minute.
It says move by Vice Chair Gregoire. So could you please restate the motion since it's been a while, since you made the motion?
So I, I guess I would move staff's recommendation as amended by the words that counsel read into the record.
I would second.
And to read into the record, those two added conditions that were incorporated into that motion. 6.3, "Within 120 days after the final map has been filed with the county and assessor, numbers have been created for each residential unit. The developer shall register all units with the city's rent stabilization division." And a new condition, 6.4. "The CCNRs for the project will reiterate the requirements associated with off-street parking under Condition 10.8 within the 2017 resolution for the property site."
Okay, are we ready to vote? Oh, we have a second from Commissioner Hoop and Garner.
And the motion passes unanimously with seven ayes? Excuse me, we do have an appeal process. Resolution number PC 25-1614, the planning commission just approved for the property located at 1221 North Detroit Street. Memorializes the commission's final action on this matter. This action is subject to appeal to the city council. Appeals must be submitted within 10 calendar days from this date to the city clerk's office. Appeals must be in writing and accompanied by the required fees. The city clerk's office can provide appeal forms and information about waiver of fees. The appeal deadline is Monday, August 18th, 2025 at 5:00 p.m.
Thank you, Secretary Gillig. Our next public hearing is Item 12B. This is 1238 to 1242 North Formosa Avenue. This is a public hearing to consider subdivision of an 18-unit residential building into a common interest development. And apologies if, you know, for those that maybe don't come here as often or are new here, I'm just going to go through the typical process again, so you all know, so we can try to keep this meeting as smooth as possible. So first we'll have the staff report, and then I'll ask if there's any disclosures, if any of my colleagues have had any conversations with members of the public or if they've had any conversations with the applicant or applicant's team. Then we'll ask any clarification-type questions of staff. There is sometimes a design review or SASE subcommittee recap, but we would not have that for this project. Then the applicant will have the opportunity to present. I do not believe the applicant has a formal presentation today. Then we can ask questions of the applicant. Then we can move on to public comments, so that would be your opportunity to ask any questions of, basically to provide any public comments. The, the commission up here, we cannot directly respond, we cannot have crosstalk, but we will acknowledge and try to steer some of the discussion based on your comments. So if there are any public comments, please go over to Secretary Gillig, and there should be a QR code over there, and you can put in a public comment request slip or ticket. From there, once we close the public comment portion and also provide for any rebuttal from the applicant, we'll move on to deliberation. If we need to, we may ask some questions of staff in the process of deliberation, and then we'll move on to hopefully having a motion a second and making a vote. So with that being said, we'll now move on to the staff presentation for Item 12B, thank you.
Thank you, Chair. Just share my... There we go. Okay, good evening again, Chair and members of the commission. The item before you is, is a request for approval of a vesting tentative track map for the subdivision of a four-story, 18-unit multifamily residential building into common interest development. The, the project does not involve conversion of, of current rental units as the residential structure is currently under construction. The property is located on the east side of Formosa Avenue, between Fountain Avenue to the north and Lexington Avenue to the south. The relatively flat site is approximately 13,500 square, square feet in size. The planning entitlements for the construction of the, of the building was approved by the planning commission in March of '21, and the building is currently under construction and was found to meet all the applicable development standards for the residential developments in the R3B zoning district when it was approved. It is staff's assessment that the subdivision will not be detrimental to the public welfare and will not impede implementation of the general plan, nor the purpose and intent of the provisions in the zoning ordinance. And therefore, staff recommends approval of the subdivision permit as conditioned in your staff report. This is, this is a very recent image of the existing or the current construction progress. And this is a rendering from the 2017 approval. So this, this is again, a rendering shown only for illustration purposes, but the current condition of the, of the project is under the final stages of framing. And that concludes my presentation for this item. And I don't believe the applicant is here for this item.
Okay, do my colleagues have any disclosures? Okay, any questions of staff? Commissioner Hoop and Garner?
Tony, I have two questions. One, the same parking question. And two, have the affordable units been identified by staff?
Yes, they have. The developer has entered into a, the Affordable Housing Agreement. And as part of the, this process, the, that agreement will be modified to reflect the CCNRs to be consistent with, with the, the agreement that, for the Affordable Housing that applies to this.
So the affordable units will be called out on the track map?
On the track map, they, they don't typically include them in the final map, but they are in the Affordable.
Section of the CCNRs?
Of the, the, the agreement, the Affordable, blanking on the name of that document, the, the agreement that is, that the owner enters with the Rent Stabilization Division. That, that contract has been executed and will be amended to reflect the CCNRs.
So back to, you know, looking forward into the potential process. If we, they finish the building and they start renting it out without converting it to condos, we're in the same situation as we just went through on the last project. So should we have your same 6.3 in this, in this resolution?
The, the difference, the difference between this one and the project we just heard on Detroit is that the registering the units, the 18 units, will take place prior to the certificate of occupancy. That process, that registry process with the housing division started in about '23, 2023. And that's why the Detroit property was not registered. This one, the, the city's internal process as part of the certificate of occupancy would, would capture that and have those units registered.
Prior to them, be, prior to condos, prior to sales, they would be registered?
Prior to the certificate of occupancy before any occupancy of the, of the building.
Regardless of type?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for staff?
I can answer the other part of the question, which was about the parking, and we found it was also conditioned, the same thing. So it's Condition 12.9.
Condition 12.9 in this resolution? Or?
No, it's in the resolution for the development of the project.
The original, that's, okay.
Original, yes.
Any other questions? If not, then do we have an applicant's presentation or would the applicant like to speak at this time? If the applicant is in the room, if you would like to speak, please approach the. No, okay. So applicant will not be presenting? So we can now move on to public comments. Do we have any public comments for this?
Chair, no public comments.
Okay, no one in Zoom. Last opportunity. Okay, opening and closing the public comment portion of this hearing. Then we can move into deliberation. We do reserve the right to reopen the public comment portion if we need to ask for clarification from the applicant or questions of staff. Would anyone like to start? Commissioner Hoop and Garner?
I'll make a motion to approve staff report.
I'll second.
With the amendment regarding the parking, as we discussed.
Same as previous, okay. So we have a motion from Commissioner Hoop and Garner. And to clarify, Isaac, would you like to?
Yes, so I think for, for the motion maker in second, so the Condition 12.9 that was referenced from the 2021 development plan already states that with respect to off-street parking, that, that condition will be reflected in the CCNRs. So I do think it's distinguishable, perhaps, and I would suggest we don't need it for, for.
I'm sorry, repeat that again?
So 12.9 currently already has language that says "The condition of approval shall be reflected in all lease and rental agreements and the CCNRs."
Okay, so it's already covered?
I would say it's already covered, but if, if the commission.
Yeah, I understand your logic, but I also do not understand your logic because I feel like we go through this a lot and we add this a lot. And I feel like most of the time that we are adding it, it is the exact same case as what we're looking at right now, where it is in a previous resolution and we're extending or, you know, they've asked to subdivide later and, and then we throw it in. So that's fine, you know, it just sets a precedent. I've never had a strong opinion, but I like to be consistent.
So Chair, with that in mind, and for the motion maker in the second, the option would be consistent with the last item. It would be a new condition that said, "The CCNRs will reiterate the requirements associated with off-street parking under Condition 12.9 within the 2021 resolution for the property site." So I'd ask if the motion maker is in favor of that added condition?
That's fine.
And also the second? Okay, so that would be an added condition that would be part of this motion.
Okay, thank you. So we have a motion from Commissioner Hoop and Garner with the additional condition as stated by Isaac Rosen, and we have a second from Commissioner Jones. Is there any further discussion or should we move to vote? Okay, we will vote.
And the motion passes unanimously with seven ayes? We do have appeal. Resolution number PC 251613, the planning commission just approved as amended for the property located at 1238 to 1242 North Formosa Avenue. Memorializes the commission's final action on this matter. This action is subject to appeal to the city council. Appeals must be submitted within 10 calendar days from this date to the city clerk's office. Appeals must be in writing and accompanied by the required fees. The appeal deadline is Monday, August 18th, 2025 at 5:00 p.m.
Thank you. Item 13 is new business. We do not have any items today. Item 14, unfinished business, we also have no items today. Item 15, excluded consent calendar, no items. That brings us to item 16, items from staff. 16A is the planning manager's update.
Yeah, good evening again. So I want to start my updates by sharing, I think you all have this invitation at your diocese. This is a historic preservation celebration event next week on Wednesday. Starts at 5:30 p.m. and it's at Viskiagogo, so we would love to see your commercials there. That was one. And then I'll just share the upcoming planning commission meetings and the items that we are already anticipating to come forward to you for your consideration. So for the August 21st meeting, it's a pretty light agenda. We only have two items. One is a consent item related to total wines and more. It's their 12-month report that comes to planning commission. The other item is again a subdivision, similar to what we have today on 545 North Suitsir Avenue. So those are the only two items for August 21st planning, public hearings. Also, the subcommittee appointments will be on the agenda for that meeting. So any questions about that?
Thank you. Any questions for my colleagues?
And Chair, if I can jump in, for the subcommittee appointments, if any of the commissioners are interested in a particular subcommittee, please reach out to the new chair, Chair Gregoire, since he will be making the appointments at the next meeting.
Thank you.
And then, sure, I can, I can share a few other upcoming meetings, information if you would like.
Subcommittee management?
Yeah, I'll go through that as well. But for the planning commission for September 4th, we are expecting, we currently have three zone text amendments scheduled, so those are all going to be coming to you from long-range planning. And then 18th of September, we'll have a conditional use permit and another subdivision for your consideration, and then billboard policy information. So those will be the three items. Go to the subcommittees. Oh my God. I'm just looking for that. I'm sorry, I just lost the webpage. Okay, so the first one is the design review subcommittee, and we don't have any items scheduled right now for that one. For the long-range planning projects subcommittee, August 21st, the item there is zone text amendment on streamlining quality, qualifying housing projects. So that's one item for August 21st, and other than that, there are no other items identified for that one. I think that's all that I have.
Okay, so maybe I missed it a minute ago, but there's no scheduled meetings at this time for SASE or design review, correct?
No, we do not, yes.
Okay, I know that they've been canceled, the upcoming two meetings.
And it looks like the August 28th meeting for design review will also be canceled.
Okay, thank you. Any questions from my colleagues? No questions? Okay, then item 17 is public comment. Do we have any public comments today?
Uh, no.
Okay. Item 18 is items from commissioners. Any items today? Commissioner Hoop and Garner?
Yes, I first would like to say a very hearty thank you to Chair Lombardi for an amazingly gracious chair years under some trying circumstances and more than one occasion. Your service has been very much appreciated by me. Thank you. And congratulations to our new chair and vice chair. And you have some. And you have some shoes to step into. And welcome to Commissioner Harris. It's good to have you.
Thank you. Any other comments? You all don't have to say anything about me, by the way, Commissioner Jones.
Around the horn.
Yeah, sorry, that's how it goes, Chair Lombardi. I just want to reiterate Commissioner Hoopan Garner's note. Being chair is hard, and it can be very trying. And sometimes it's 11:00 p.m., and you just want to go home like everybody else. And you've done a really amazing job of staying incredibly zen under not always very zen circumstances. So thank you for ferrying us through the dark night, literally. Also wanted to wish a, just my best wishes to Commissioner Matos. We all thought we were gonna get to say goodbye to him in our last meeting and then it ended up being canceled. Want to thank him for his service, you know. As someone who like didn't totally know what they were doing when I started on planning commission, I'm always in awe and also like slightly irked. I'm like, how does this person know exactly what they're doing? But like, he just had such a great way on the dais, and I really enjoyed working with him. And wish him all the best in future endeavors. I'm sure we will see him again, so want to wish him the best. Also want to welcome Commissioner Harris. I feel like I talked to you like three months ago, so welcome. Finally, the night is here. Really looking forward to working with you and want to congratulate our new chair. Chair Gregoire, Commissioner Gregoire as well. So that's all, and thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I'll say welcome, congrats, good riddance. Chair Lombardi, outgoing chair. For me, especially being new, coming on, and you taking me under your wing. And I remember meeting with you on the Plummer Park Playground as we went over. Especially thank you on the file organization system that you adopted, exactly what you did. Thank you for mentoring me this past year on being able to come up to speed and handle this. And I haven't forgotten, you still do owe me a game of pickleball. And now you have free time. So I also wanted to give a shout out to Commissioner Matos. He always came eager and prepared and added to the deliberation here and added to the projects that ultimately came through this body. So we will miss him. Commissioner Harris, you have shoes to fill, but I have no doubt that you are up to the task. Thanks.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Vice Chair Gregoire?
So you know, I don't typically like to repeat what everyone else is saying, but welcome, Commissioner Harris. We've already had a chance to start to get to know each other. I'm really excited to serve with you on the commission. Chair Lombardi, thank you so much. There were, in fact, a few meetings that were quite challenging. You handled them great. Have to say, I am a little nervous taking over as chair. I served as another commission's chair on a few occasions. But this can be, we can have some challenging long evenings. So I think I'm up to the challenge. But I have now been on this commission under Commissioner Hoopan Garner as chair, Chair Lombardi, Commissioner Jones, Commissioner Cavallaro. And I've learned a little from all four of you. So I'm sure if I just channel everything I've learned from the four of you, I will do fine. And finally, Commissioner Matos, you are a terrific planning commissioner. Thank you so much for your service. You will be missed and we'll continue to stay in touch. And finally, Secretary Gillig mentioned we have subcommittee appointments. I'll make a point over the next two weeks to reach out to each one of you to talk about what your interests are, and we'll move on from there. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Commissioner Cavallaro?
I will just say ditto across the dais. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Okay, well, I really appreciate all the thoughtful comments that you all have provided. I took just a couple of notes right before I started this meeting, and of course, they vaporized, so, but that's fine. First of all, I want to thank or congratulate Commissioner Harris. Really excited to have you here. And of course, congratulations to incoming Chair Gregoire. It's been a pleasure serving with you. You know, the one piece of advice I would give you to the comment you just made is if you're not feeling a little bit nervous or anxious, well, you know, that just means that you care, so that's a good thing. So it's always gonna be there, and sometimes a little bit more than other days. I also do want to thank Commissioner Matos. I think I have a few times, but it really was a pleasure having him here. And you know, it's too bad that we didn't have a more formal departure with him. So I do want to thank him for his service. And Commissioner Solomon, thank you for the reminder that we are, I owe a game of pickleball with you that predates me ever even thinking that you'd be here on the planning commission.
Now you have all that free time.
We need to make it happen. Saying that, it's been a pleasure serving as chair, and I just want to thank all of my colleagues. You know, this role is often criticized, and the work is not always acknowledged. And so, you know, I'm impressed every time I come here, which has now been four years and counting, by the thoughtfulness that you bring, how professional you are, how much you care, and how you roll with whatever happens in each meeting. Because, you know, we never know, and we have had some challenging meetings. So thank you for being supportive, for helping me make the meetings smooth, even when maybe they weren't as smooth as I wanted them to be or even when we set records for longest meetings ever, which I will never not hear about again. But it's been a pleasure. I really appreciated it. I have learned a ton, and I just wanted to thank you all. And I'll just leave it at that. But, yeah, Vice Chair or incoming Chair Gregoire, you'll do fine. And Vice Chair Jones, it's always been a pleasure having you lead meetings. So I know you'll be great at it, too, when you need to step in. Other than that, housekeeping items, because we got caught up in all the introductions and transitions. So of course, this is a moment where also if anyone, you know, meeting attendance, if anyone wants to flag anything, I do. I will not be able to make the next meeting. I need to be in New York for work reasons. So unfortunately, I will not be here for the next meeting, but I will definitely listen in. Anyone else?
I'll be gone September 18th for a work meeting as well.
Okay. Anyone else? Okay, well, thank you so much. On that note, it is 9, sorry, 7:43 p.m. I'd like to adjourn this regularly scheduled planning commission meeting, and our next meeting will be on Thursday, August 21st, 2025, here in council chambers. Thank you.